Good evening and welcome to the December 14, 2023 meeting of the Longview City Council, our only meeting in the month of December. Tonight's prayer and pledge will be led by Beth Godsey, Executive Director of the East Texas Alzheimer's Alliance, which is an independent, local nonprofit with a mission to immediately improve the lives of caregivers and patients in East Texas affected by Alzheimer's disease or related dementias. They place a special emphasis on caring for the caregiver through support groups, respite care, workshops, and education. Please rise.
Our Heavenly Father, as the City Council comes before you and the city together and look at issues affecting our Longview community, we call upon you to guide them, help them, and fill them with wisdom and knowledge so that they can be able to lead your people. May you be with them as they begin the meeting until they finish, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Beth, and for all the work that you do. Very much appreciated. Tonight, we have a presentation of certificates of recognition to the Mayor and City Council for the unwavering support of the city's Cultural Arts Office and of the Arts Longview Cultural District by the Arts Longview Board of Directors. Incoming 2024 Board President, Dr. Brenda Kays, will be speaking on behalf of the board. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mack and Longview City Council members. My name is Brenda Kays, and I am the incoming 2024 Board President of Arts Longview. It is an honor and a privilege to be here this evening for this presentation on behalf of the Arts Longview Cultural District. Since 2018, when plans for a state-designated cultural district in Longview began to take shape, the Longview City Council has been a steadfast supporter and advocate of those efforts. However, the city's support for the arts goes back decades with the annual distribution of Cultural Activities Advisory Commission funds, which support our local arts and culture agencies. In 2019, when we received our official designation as a cultural district, the Longview City Council was by our side to celebrate this milestone achievement, and since then, the city has continued to advance the arts with such efforts as the establishment of the Office of Cultural Arts. I'm proud to say that in the first four years of having our cultural district designation, Arts Longview and our partner agencies have brought in more than $760,000 in state grant funding that we would not have been eligible for without having the state designation. This investment in our community has shown tremendous impact in economic development. According to the 2023 Texas Cultural Trust State of the Arts Report, the state grant funds given to cultural districts showed a two-to-one return on investment in state tax revenue, and the arts and cultural industry as a whole generated $6 billion for the Texas economy. On behalf of the Arts Longview, our Board of Directors, and all of those involved in each of our partner organizations, I thank you for your support of the arts. At this time, I invite the leaders of our arts and cultural nonprofit organizations to come forward to present each of you with a certificate of appreciation for your unwavering support, starting with Arts Longview Executive Director Christina Cavosos to Mayor Andy Mack, Longview Symphony Orchestra Executive Director Nikki Gross to District One Councilman Tim Carpenter, Gregg County Historical Museum Executive Director Lindsay Loy to District Two Councilwoman Nona Snotty, Longview World of Wonders Executive Director Sarah McKinley to District Three Councilman Ray Wade, Longview Museum of Arts Executive Director Tiffany Jahorik to District Four Councilman John Newstead, Artsview Children's Theater Executive Director Nathaniel Olson to District Five Councilwoman Michelle Gamboa, and Theater Longview Executive Director Denise Knudsen to District Six Councilman Steve Pertle. We'd love to get a group photo at this time. Would everyone associated with Arts Longview please join us in the front of the chamber?
We usually get ripped on by big groups like this that show up in the council chamber, and we're all sitting there going, what did we do this time? Who did we make mad? What have we done wrong? But it really is nice to have you all show your support of us and our support for you all as well, because, you know, as we all know, we live in a diverse community, and we have diverse interests, but there's no reason that those who like baseball can't like baseball, and those who like soccer can't like soccer, and those who like flowers can't like the arboretum, and those who like arts can't like arts. We can all like our own things and support those of others that we don't always enjoy, but we can support each other, and that's what makes this work. That's why Longview works, and that's why we have such a great collaboration and we're so successful at what we do. So, thank you all for what you do, and thank you all for your support and the community for supporting that as well, because we can all get along and all be happy. So, thank you very much. Thank you to y'all. We are now to citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. Keith Still.
Good evening. My name is Keith Still. I hope some of y'all recognize that name, because I sent out an email and copied everybody. So, I hope you're kind of familiar with what I'm going to speak about tonight. I live at 1251 Claredale Drive here in Longview, and I want to bring attention to our traffic signals and traffic flow and signs this evening. I used to be a City of Longview employee, and I worked for the traffic department, so I'm familiar with this. So, I just want to bring some attention, some awareness, and some love to all of this. And I'm also trying to be a contributing part of our community and show my children also that if they see something, to speak up and try to get something done about it. A lot of things I see as I go around the city related to traffic, traffic signals. There are some traffic signals around the city, like at Fairmont and Bill Owens. The left southbound turn lane comes on when they're, when one car comes in and triggers that lane, the car goes through and clears it, the traffic light stays on for a long time, and the people else at the light have to wait. So, there's, I have a list of several intersections I've seen like that. Also, the flow of traffic in Longview, like at the Loop and Justin Road, when I'm trying to go pick up my children from school at four o'clock, sometimes I have to wait three cycles of that light to go through the intersection. I think, you know, stuff like this is things we can improve on. Also, some traffic signs that we have, like on Bill Owens, the 40 mile an hour speed zone sign. North of Lois Jackson Park has been out of alignment since a storm came through. I don't even remember when, and it hasn't been fixed. So, I just want to make sure everybody is aware of these things, and somebody notices and somebody takes action on these things to improve our city. I've always kind of thought that we were in competition with Tyler, and that Longview was better, and I can remember traveling to Tyler and not enjoying it, because I didn't like going around the city and getting, and going through the traffic and the intersections. And I'm sorry to say, I think we've become more like them. I see people running red lights more in this city than I used to, because the traffic timing is slow, and people have to wait, and when it go, when they start moving, they got to keep moving. So, I'm just here to try to bring light to that, to improve it. Also, because when the light turns green, it's your time to go, you can't go, because somebody's still running the light in front of you. So, that cuts down on the time that you can move through the intersection yourself. So, you know, this is just stuff I think we can bring light to and correct, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards, so we will move on to Public Safety Update. Chief Moon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. McPhee. First, cover our stats for last month. You'll see on our Priority One Calls for Service, our average was actually down to 3 minutes and 48 seconds. Again, y'all know I like to stay sub-five minutes, so I'm very impressed with that time, and maybe we can keep that up. I mean, getting sub-four minutes is, I'm very proud of that. Calls for service, we had 4,773 calls for service during the month of November, and our traffic stops to help with some of those red light runners was 2,581. Our DWI cases for the month were 20, and our crash totals for the month were 214. I want to move on and talk a little bit about the new police station that several folks inside the room have already had an opportunity to tour. So, we had our ribbon cutting on December 12, this past Tuesday, and then we, it followed immediately with an open house for the public, and I think we probably had close to 400 people come through the building and nothing but positive feedback. So, again, thank you to the community, thank you to our leaders for having something like this inside our city, and our police force, and our dispatchers, and support staff. We're very, very appreciative to have something quite like this. And I also want to talk about our newest cadets that will get to enjoy the new building. They graduated on December 7 on the Police Academy, and our cadets and the other cadets from the other departments that were in our academy all passed the state test at 100% pass rate, so we're very fortunate about that and pleased with that. And then yesterday, they actually, they were our first group to do an impact tour with United Way. One thing we've kind of thought about at the Police Department is there are so many resources available that parallel what our police officers do on a daily basis, but we always do a good job of, especially teaching our new officers, what are those resources? So, they spent the afternoon yesterday with United Way going around and touring several of the facilities and other entities that they support, and I think it was a very powerful, powerful trip for the day. And then this morning, that's why I'm still wearing the Class A, we had our graduation, or excuse me, our commissioning ceremony, and all of the officers received their badges this morning, and they will start field training the next couple of weeks, and we're very proud of them. Very, very good group, very excited about them hitting the streets. Also, and I don't have a slide on it, but this week, it was actually on Tuesday morning, I want to thank the Fire Department as well and Good Shepherd. They invited us out for the annual rappelling from the SWAT officers, and Blue Santa was out there as well, and the Fire Department made sure all of that was completed safely. So, thank you to everybody that participated in that. And then also, we on Monday, excuse me, Monday evening and Tuesday evening, from 6:00 to 8:00, we had our Shop with the Cop, our Blue Santa program, and that's where families were able to come out there to Walmart on East Loop, and thank you to Walmart for participating with us again for another year. They were out there to see, they got to see the Grinch, got to see Blue Santa, and got to shop with an officer and pick out some goodies for Christmas. So, we're definitely, definitely thankful and excited that we got to spend some time doing that. And something new, this is getting a little bit outside of my comfort zone, but this is what the, our officers and our support staff came to me, said, hey, let's start a podcast. So, I'm kind of caveman cop, but I said, let's, let's try it out. They have recorded two now. You can actually find it on Spotify, and there's a couple of other spots. They will, so you have to kind of look, they're hitting at the moment, but starting tomorrow, they will publicize those, and I think off Facebook you will be able to find those. First one is actually our two lieutenants there that are up front, Rocket and Higginbotham, talking a little bit about who they are and why they chose law enforcement. And then our second one is on Blue Santa, and Officer Cindy Howell talks about Blue Santa and the Blue Santa program. So, again, well, you'll see more of those, and so, in your commute, when you're driving around or going and grocery shopping or whatever else, or at the house, if you don't have something else better to do, turn it on, listen to it, check it out, let us know what you think. And then the old Grinch, he's still running around doing Community Service Force right now, so again, continue, if you have any sightings of him, take pictures, send them to us, add it to our Facebook page, and he will continue working on his community service hours as we approach Christmas. Also, since we only have one meeting this month, I wanted to go ahead and talk about it. December 31, New Year's Eve, always a lot of fireworks, so here are some tips up there, and remember that they are actually illegal inside the city limits, and also ask our community to kind of bear with us. I only have so many officers that night, and we always get quite a few calls. I know the Fire Marshal's Office will be out as well, and our biggest, our top effort will be on firearms, and though sometimes it's hard to tell the difference between maybe gunfire and fireworks, but definitely can't have any of it, but the firearms is the most concerning, and we will get to those calls as we can. So, please continue to let us know, but also have a little patience, because it is a very, very busy night. And for recruiting efforts, you know, I talk about that every time I'm up here, and we normally have a picture of our officers. This time, I wanted to have some pictures of the building, so if you didn't get to make the tour, obviously you have the front that you've probably seen when you've driven by, but there to the right, there's a picture of the lobby, and then to the left, a picture of the training room. And it's just a very, very impressive building. We're very proud of it, and I think we have a very progressive agency. Now, we have a very progressive building that matches being a progressive agency, so thank you. And with that, I want to say happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions with Chief Moon?
I have a, not a question for Chief Moon. Congratulations again, but Mr. Archer, I just wanted you to get with the man from my district about the lighting situation, and then I'll forward you his email as well. And thank you, sir, for...
They've already met with him.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
I have more important, but yes. Yeah, you should have my email already.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. And congratulations on the building. What an accomplishment, and you're right, it is a progressive building, and now we have a progressive Police Force to end podcast. Who would have thought? Good for y'all. I think it's fantastic. Okay, we're consented in. Any items, Council, like pulled off for separate discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to discuss K, L, and M, and we can discuss them in tandem.
Okay. Anyone else? Any others? Okay, K, L, and M?
Yes, sir.
Shoot.
I want to understand exactly, Chief Moon, exactly what's going on, and if we're pulling officers off these campuses, or if we're cost-sharing. I just need, the memorandum of understanding is a little too broad for me to be...
Yes, sir. The memorandum of understanding, this is actually for off-duty officers, so that there are officers that are, that work for the Longview Police Department, the City of Longview, but then they work off-duty at the three different school districts, and with that, sometimes it's, you know, they, they work for the Police Department, but when they're at the school, they have a principal and assistant principal that they work with as well. So, all this does is give clear rules of engagement. Basically, if somebody's tardy, who handles that? But if there's something, a larger issue, which entity handles that? So, it's really just creates clear lines of engagement. This doesn't go into pay or anything like that. All of that is already set, they're already paid through the school districts.
So, our on-campus officers are still in place?
Yes, sir. This, this has nothing to do with school resource officers. This is strictly on...
That's the word I was trying to...
Yes, sir. This is strictly for off-duty security.
So, like at football games and...
Yes, sir. Football games or a campus where you might, like at a high school, there might be one assigned SRO, but they may have several more officers that work that are off-duty throughout the day. This is referring to those officers, and just giving clear rules of engagement.
Well, like saying, it said, you know, memorandum of understanding, I didn't understand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for clearing that up. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, if there's no other questioning, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Out of zoning, public hearing, held to consider application S-23-11. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a massage parlor in Office Zoning District. A specific use permit is required to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Currently, there are offices, retail, and single-family homes surrounding this property. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Ms. Choi. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing held to consider application filed by Fikes Wholesale. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting to abandon a 40-foot wide street right of way, known as Lilly Street, located west of Eastman Road and north of I-20 Access Road. The applicant would like to incorporate this street into their development. Lilly Street used to extend north, but that was abandoned as part of a development that was further north of this, or to the north of this property. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Ms. Choi.
Are they planning a rehab, or what are they doing?
They're planning on remodeling this gas station, and so they'll incorporate that street into that project.
And that's the one that had the grandies on the other end?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Choi. Public hearing is now closed.
Moved approved.
Just one second.
Oh.
Make another, I'm recusing myself from this vote for personal reasons. Okay? So, all in favor? Was there a motion?
He most. I'll second.
So, a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You had a discussion item presented in discussion concerning Longview Swim Center. Mr. John Albertson. Got his name right that time.
Mayor Mack, Councilman, Mr. McPhee, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight related to our Longview Swim Center. To get started, I'd like to give you a brief history. In the 1960s, the federal government made heavy investments into community aquatic facilities, very similar to those that we have. The Longview, the City of Longview maintained four outdoor pools at the height of our program. We currently operate two, one of which, of course, is Ingram Pool, the other is Longview Swim Center, which we're here to discuss tonight. As you are aware, the Longview Swim Center is located on the Pine Tree School District property. The current lease between the school district and the City of Longview was signed in 1973. Our use of the property has become more limited over the years due to increased need for security and lengthening of the school year. We use the property about 60 days per year. Pine Tree is open to renegotiating that lease, as long as we, of course, maintain the property in good working condition. Onto National Parks and Recreation standards, according to National Parks and Recreation standards, it requires one outdoor pool for every 43,100 residents. We currently meet this standard. However, if anything is done to close or to render unoperational Longview Swim Center, then we would not meet that standard. Longview Swim Center, of course, has many public benefits to our community. The two most important are educational purposes and recreational purposes. Recreationally, we have, on average, 8,200 visits per year, and we also teach 870 children per year to swim. A review of national aquatics trends is necessary to show us what the public desires for future facilities, and we are not alone in this discussion. Many cities across the country are having very similar discussions about their aquatics facilities and have tough decisions facing them as well. The modern users, of course, have new desires for public's aquatics facilities, such as water slides, lazy rivers, and splash pads. The national trends show most municipalities are renovating in the existing current place. One aspect that makes us different in this regard is that we do not own the property with which we would be investing additional improvements. On a local level, public aquatics has taken several recent hits, with La Ternou University and Kilgore College no longer operating their public pools. Longview ISD, of course, is facing significant pool repairs as well, so we are the primary sole source for public aquatics for our community. That leads us to where we are today. Based on the engineer's report and working in conjunction with our public works department, we have come up with the following three options. The first of which would be abandoning the existing Longview Swim Center facility. This option would allow us to thoroughly study the future of our department's aquatics and its many challenges. The second option would be to perform the necessary repairs and remodel the pool in its current location for a cost of $4.2 million, which would continue restricted use and require the maintenance of the lease agreement. The third option is to abandon the current location and build a new facility at a cost of upwards, or up to $13 million, which would largely be determined, of course, by public And at this point, I'll be glad to take any questions or further direction from you all.
Questions of Mr. Albertson?
Can you go back to the slide, just so we can look at it? On the second option, is there, is there room for negotiation with Pine Tree in regards to the restriction of the time we can use it, how we had a conversation with those appropriate parties and seeing what it would look like to...
Sir...
I know myself, I grew up actually swimming in that pool. I know that a lot of people probably in this community have as well, so I know it's going to be a hard choice either way, and I'm happy we have all these options. Thank you for getting us so many options on this.
So, with that, the reason that we have those limitations and the reason that those were put in place with the contract is because of school security and the direction that we were headed, and so I think that would be the limiting factor that we would face there, where they try and operate a closed campus for security purposes. So, that would limit us to, on average, 60 days a year.
What was their reaction to, did you present them with the first option? What was their reaction to you mentioning that?
Well, we have, of course, had discussions with Pine Tree, and Pine Tree is actually present as well, and we've had discussions with them about where we kind of had and those options. We have not gone into extreme detail about those options with them at this point.
You said Pine Tree is here today, right now?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. Mr. Clogston, would you mind coming to the podium and maybe letting us know how your perspective on this? It's discussion right?
How are y'all?
Good.
How are you?
Like the jacket.
Thank you. This is number four of a lot, so. Pine Tree is open to keeping the pool on site. We just request it be properly maintained. I mean, I don't need an eyesore on my property. What I do, you know, it doesn't really make a difference to us. The thing that I think it benefits is the surrounding area. It's a very walkable pool from a lot of neighborhoods, both from Pine Tree and from Longview High Stand. I think that's a benefit to our community. You know, we just passed a bond, and, you know, we're looking at a long-range plan, and everything that we have planned is planned around it, not, you know, not that it's gone. We're expecting it to be there. So, everything we've done, and even looking out further, is expecting it to be there. So, we're up, we're willing to do that. So we're up for, we're willing to do that. That's not a problem.
So you all don't need that for future expansion of your campus or anything of that nature?
No, we don't have to. I mean, like I say, everything we've designed is designed around it.
But if you had it, you could put it to some use, I'm assuming?
Well, I mean, I guess every piece of land you could put to use at some point. Do I think it's, that amount of property right there is, is worth taking it away from our community? No, I mean, I don't think it is. I think it's a benefit.
Well, we, we can't take it away from the community. If we took it away, we have to replace it.
Well, I know. I mean, I think the benefit of that one is just-
We're not gonna abandon the pool and not replace something. It's just a matter of do the logistics of where, where the best place and the best use of property is. If, if it's something Pine Tree needed and you need it for expansion, we certainly wouldn't want to re-renovate it and redo it if you all were going to then, you know, cement it in and make a building out of it or something. We wouldn't want to do that. But if y'all's plans are not to utilize that, that portion, that, that is a piece of puzzle we would need to know for sure.
We're willing to partner with you guys on that.
Okay. Good.
Questions, okay, I'll answer.
Okay, hold on, tell me, tell me, tell me. We're, we're gonna go like we're supposed to. Raise your hand, and I'll recognize whoever would like to be speaking. Okay. Mr. Carpenter had his hand up first. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Clugston, in that, that replat, reposition at the high school, and this is maybe a question you can't answer off the top, but is there any way to get additional access and keep your campus closed where we could use the, the pool for citizens over more than just that two-month period when school is out?
Now, we're only in school one-hundred-and-seventy-one days. I mean, their students are there.
Right. But I mean, as far as to get to the pool now, you have to come through the Fairmont-
Through the parking lot, the, the high school parking lot.
And when you add those buildings and move the stadiums, is there any way that the pool would have accessible parking that would not have to be inside your secured perimeter, coming possibly even from the north?
Probably not. Not at, not at its current location.
I, I was concerned about the two, the two-month use, because the school goes through May, so we basically have June, July, then you gotta start back up in August.
We start school generally around the seventeenth of August.
Two and a half months.
Usually are out of school by the twenty-third, before, before Memorial Day. I mean, yes.
So John, what I hear you say is the, the access is the biggest issue from whether we, you have no access issues at Paul and Martin Jones, or you have no access issues at Ingram because you're not on a closed campus, correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you.
Mr. Newstead.
So, I'll, John, I grew up swimming at that pool too, and my daughter took swimming lessons there at the pool too, so I know and utilize it a lot and has some, meaning to me as well. My question though, on this, is how many operating days do we have Ingram Pool? So I can have a comparison between how much we're actually losing in days.
So the way that we've operated in the past is we've operated on a similar schedule. So if we were to have this be able to open, if Longview Swim Center were to be able to open longer, we would keep Ingram open longer as well. So we've matched those up just so that we have management and everything working together at the same time.
So as of right now, Ingram and Longview Swim Center have the exact same amount of operating days, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
And then, in that same regards too, how's staffing a challenge whenever you're looking to staff mostly during the summer, which you can pull from students? I don't know, is it feasible with the lifeguard shortages to extend that beyond that window?
The lifeguard shortages, of course, are gonna be a significant issue in any direction we have with our aquatics program, I think, moving forward. It is a piece that we do have to evaluate regularly, and we're in the process of evaluating for this next summer. Those are areas that we can navigate, I think. There is some more areas that we can kind of extend that season if we want to here and there to work around with our lifeguards.
Okay. I have a few other questions, real quick. With the comprehensive plan, what's, what's the findings about a public swimming pools in that plan?
So in the, the most, the current ongoing master plan, we do have preliminary numbers and data from that. You're looking at seventy-three percent of the respondents in that survey have determined that aquatic facilities, recreational aquatic facilities are important to the city of Longview. And that's preliminary numbers from the ongoing master plan, and then the previous comprehensive plan had outdoor and indoor swimming pools as one of the top amenities that were requested.
I'm sorry, two more questions, real fast, I'm sorry. Now, what is the useful life for the Paul and Martin Jones Swimming Pool?
Useful life, that's something that's extremely hard to determine. So most pools, as I had mentioned, that were funded through the federal grant system, they're at the end of their life expectancy. So a lot of those repairs are coming up. Paul and Martin Jones is not one of the pools that was funded through that. However, it does, of course, have challenges that we plan to work through in the coming years through our maintenance plan, which we're gonna be putting in place for our entire department. That's a piece that we're gonna work on for Ingram and for Paul and Martin Jones to try and address some major problems before they become bigger.
Okay. And my, my last question, on this, the rendering for this, the second, the repairing remodel, is this something that you're, this proposal, like what all includes, what's all included in this four-point-two million? And are we limited because it's on Pine Tree campus from being, making it more modern with the slides, or is that, is that still feasible with this current location?
So with the four-point-two million dollars, what we've accounted for is the ability to do some modernization as well as the necessary repairs that we, were determined by the engineer. So we could do both of those. Of course, that would be something that we would want to talk to Pine Tree about and work together with them to make sure that whatever modernized features that we added, they were acceptable as well.
Mayor, I just had one more question.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John. Mr. Pearl has his hand up before you. Mr. Pearl.
I've, I've looked at this, from keeping it there to moving it, and I'm, I'm really in favor of keeping it there for the biggest reasons is we've had good partnership with the school and the city for the last fifty years. There's numerous, numerous neighborhoods with lots and lots of people that use this pool, walk to this pool, ride bikes to this pool. I've got three apartment complexes that live within walking distance that go to school there and that ride their bikes there, and I'm sure utilize this pool in the summertime. It, it's just a good fit for a neighborhood pool. It, it's, it's accessible to a lot of kids that, that probably wouldn't be able to, to go to Lear Park or, or somewhere else that, that they had to have a car ride to get there to, that they couldn't ride a bike or walk to. I think it's a big plus for that area. We've spent six to seven million dollars on that street out there and the sidewalks, and they are very well being utilized, and this is a good example of what they're being utilized for, not just for the school. Coming up here this afternoon, I drove by and I had one gentleman carrying his baby in a backpack, walking up down the sidewalks, two people jogging, and, and an older couple walking down there. So that, that road is used a whole lot, and I think that by keeping the pool there, it not only enhances the school, because the school is fixing to spend fifty-five million dollars on that and other facilities around there to upkeep all this, so that's not going down and not going away. We have very, very good security there. I know that for a fact, because I've walked through there a lot, especially in the evenings, and there's always police there, always around that school. So I think it's more beneficial cost-wise for us to keep it there, because I think it enhances the school and the school enhances it. You're looking at four million dollars versus thirteen million dollars. One, we'd be taking, we'd be buying property somewhere else that we'd probably be taking off the tax roll for the city, county, and the school district versus right now, it's already off the tax roll. So there's, there's no, you know, there's nothing to that. It's kind of like building a house. I know what houses cost right now, and a lot of people can't afford a house, so they go out and they get a existing house, and they'll spend money on remodeling it, and it's a lot more cost-effective for them, and they'll live there for twenty, twenty-five years. And that's the way I'm looking at this. I want it to stay there because I think it, it's, it's a good fit for the area and the neighborhood. Now, if you've got another place that you'd rather send it to, and you can tell us that, maybe we could look at it. But I'm not in for going out to doing a study to put it in McCordar Park or out at Lear, out at Lear Park or something like that, because of, to go to Lear Park, for kids to have to drive or walk there, they have to cross two major highways, the Loop and Highway eighty, if they lived right in that, those neighborhoods right there. So it just doesn't seem like a family, neighborhood-oriented pool at that point. So, you know, if you go towards Spring Hill, that might be an option, but where out at Spring Hill we're gonna go? You know, we're kind of limited on, on property that would be accessible to the younger crowd, the younger kids. And during the summertime, I've seen the football players come off the football field and go swimming in this pool, you know, so, and then a lot of them will get up and walk home, you know, from there. So I just think it's a good fit for that area. I think we'd be wise to spend money on keeping it there for a number, for the, all the reasons I've spoke so, so that, that's why I'm, I'm wanting to stay, leave it right where it's at. The school has been more than obliging to say that that's a good fit for them if we upkeep it and not let it get into the situation it's got into for the last ten years. Now, you know, we just spent twenty-four million dollars or twenty-five million dollars on a bond for our parks, because they were so, you know, dilapidated. And it's not just pools, it was a lot of other things. So I feel like by that pool being there, and if we upkeep it for the next twenty, twenty-five years, that we'll get our money's worth back out of it for four, four or five million dollars versus thirteen-plus million dollars at this point. So that's, that's why I feel like I would like to have it stay there.
Ms. Campbell's next.
I just want to wrap up my thought from my initials, sorry. And following up on that, one major thing that I want to emphasize is that I would really like to see development like this stay in West Longview. I think oftentimes when we do shy away from them, we take it away from West Longview, and West Longview really needs some more development, so I would be in favor of keeping it for those reasons. And if we were hypothetically to move it, I'd like to still see it moved somewhere in that area. We, I know we have a lot of great development in all parts of Longview right now, south, northwest, all of them, but I really like, if, if we're taking something away from West Longview, I'd like to replace something in West Longview. And just to, real quick to follow up on that, I think something that's very inexpensive we can do just to maintenance these pools and these parks is a lot of our signage is very outdated, so maybe just getting some community service people to paint some of that would also do, do us some good. And that's all I really had, was just those two comments.
Ms. Snobbe.
I was just thinking that as long as it is on school property, security and safety is always gonna be a concern. So what are we gonna do? I mean, if we're looking at option two, to, you know, eliminate that, that type of thing or alleviate the, the fact that it is on a school campus and we want the public to be able to come in and use it, and right now we have limited amount of time that we can use it. What are we gonna do in the future to increase so that we can utilize it more, if at all possible?
Well, and I think that would be something, of course, that we could work with the school district potentially to try and work on.
Yeah, state, the state laws, as far as, as school security goes, open to the public, you know, during the school day is, is a very difficult thing. You know, I've, I've got a partnership with a, with a, with a clinic, but that's actually outside my gate, so that works out. It would be very difficult to operate that thing behind my gate. You know, the pool works out because it's been in the summer when school's not in session.
Also, I'd like to just throw this-
That brings up another question. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I would just like to throw this out. Michelle, you were saying that keeping it in West Longview and you proposing we're having to buy land. I mean, we've already have land, we've had a couple of pools to close, which was Armstrong Pool, which was in Broaden Park, there was a pool there, and also in Stamper Park. So we own places where, I mean, property where, if that was a consideration, where pools could possibly be, that we want pools, so.
Mr. Newstead had another follow-up, and then Mr. Pearl will be asked.
Yeah, I just want to wrap up kind of my thought process on this. With the needs of Paul and Martin Jones Pool needing to be addressed as well, to spend thirteen million dollars at, at this time for that, knowing that we're gonna have to address that, also with knowing part of the comprehensive plan that the citizens are wanting, they need a, a rec center, I want to leave that open as well as, as a possibility. So those are my, my thoughts on where I'm at.
Mr. Pearl.
Well, everybody knows that I'm for keeping it where it's at. I just feel like it's a good fit. And thirteen versus four, that leaves us a lot of money left over that we might can go towards Spring Hill. Spring Hill has, Spring Hill's been behind the eight ball on this whole thing. Their park has been, now, the swimming pool has been, they have very little out there. I bordered that, Tim borders that, and, you know, that would be for Michelle to, to look at and see what she wanted, and that gives us money if we had to go to the thirteen or fourteen, that gives us money to look at something out there even, versus spending it all in one spot, which, you know, we, we don't have a lot of options there. And then, like John said, we've got other pools that are gonna need to be revamped and redone. Paul and Martin Jones, I'm sure the other pool over there in, in John's area, that's an old pool. I mean, when I was growing up, we went there some. So, you know, we're never gonna get up to par. It's kind of like building a house. You can build a house, and then six months later, there's gonna be something new and bigger and better to put in them, and it's, and that's the way it is with these swimming pools. So I just feel like-
Mr. Clugston, you can sit down. If we need you again, we'll call you back up. Sorry to have you up there for so long. John, you gotta stay. John, John, John. You're not Mr. Clugston, John.
Just, just the last thing, Mayor, in regards to access, it's just-
You ought to keep saying, I'm gonna wrap it up, and then say one last thing again. What is the deal?
When else do we get to discuss this much? I think we're just all excited.
Yeah, I can tell.
But in regards to access, just real quick, Mr. Clugston, I think that's what's really going to kind of, that's why we're going back and forth so much, is the access is really going to impede, like, like Mr. John has said over here, all the other pool's success rely on the availability of all the other pools being open. So I'd just really like for you to kind of sit on that and maybe consider, I don't know if we have, I don't know if we've made a decision. I'd kind of like to make a motion to table this.
This is a discussion, there's no decision. This is the first time we've heard of this, so in reality, none of us should have our minds made up yet. We don't even have all the facts yet. We're, we're just trying to fact-find and get information so we can discuss, so we can then formulate ideas and come back with intelligent conversation in the future, because there's so many things about this that we don't, we haven't even touched the surface yet. We've been presented three ideas, hundred-and-thirty-eight million to thirteen, hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand to thirteen million dollars. We've got to digest and, and dissect it, because the things that cross my mind are this: In your renovation, John, is, is there just the renovation part? Is there, is, is there a possibility to heat the pool so it could be used more than sixty days a year? Is there the possibility if we did it somewhere else? You know, we've had the people come up here, council meeting after council meeting, wanting a tennis center. Do you, do you make this a tennis center with a swimming pool for a recreational facility for the community in a, in a location that would be also utilized by a neighborhood? I mean, there, there are so many opportunities that we have to think about, but especially the restrictions. We have to think about restrictions, put a four-point-two million dollars and then be restricted from what we can do with it is another option we have to look at. And we can't say we're, we're going to not spend thirteen now, we're gonna spend four and then save the other and spend somewhere else. We don't, we don't have any of that money yet in our, in our financial plan. We're trying to coordinate what we see as a potential best scenario for the future of Longview, not, not decided at this meeting, because there's a lot of things that, that we don't, we haven't even taken into consideration yet. So you all have a lot of work to do, you presented us with some options, but now we presented you with way more questions than you presented us with options. So now we have to come back and have another discussion when we have more information, because what we would like to see, I think, from everybody's discussion is, okay, number one, if we, because, remember this, if we decide to move it someplace else, we still gotta spend a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand to cover it up and make it, give it back to Pine Tree. So that's a given. You're gonna spend that regardless. No matter what you do, you're gonna spend a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars, or whatever that number was, a hundred-and-forty-eight, yeah. So we need some, we need some scenarios based on option two and option three, and those scenarios need to be very simple. Well, not simple, they're complex. The renovation would be what? We want, I want to see what a renovation would look like and what's involved with the renovation and what it would be. You said some modernizing, well, give me an idea what four-point-two million dollars buys us, and then get with Pine Tree and Mr. Clugston and that group and find out- And then get with Pine Tree and Mr. Cluxton and that group and find out how we're going to solve this restriction problem. Because the general public probably isn't going to be real thrilled about us spending four point two million dollars and then us saying you can't go there because it's closed to the public because school is in session. And if we can expand our other swimming facility to allow more days, we want to see what that looks like. And if we decide to go off someplace else, show us where we have options to go and what that could look like. And, because this is not going to be a decision that we're going to make real quickly, um, because there's a lot to be, to be considered here. So let's look at a big picture, but not lose sight of the, of the focus we're supposed to be on, which is this pool. But the big picture means, use your, use your thought process and say, okay, is this feasible to do more than just one thing? If we're going to spend a bunch of money, do we incorporate a tennis facility? Do we incorporate a covered pool, a indoor-outdoor pool? You know, those are, those are big decisions, but remember, gang, big decision that made here many, many years ago paid off in fruitful numbers for the city of Longview. So, um, come back with some information for us, John.
Yes, sir.
Very good, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you so much, sir. And thank you, Mr. Cluxton, sorry we had you up there so long, I didn't, didn't mean to put you on display like that, but, uh, our bad. Okay, we are to items of community interest. We will first, uh, uh, make a motion to, excuse Mr. Wade, he was unable to get here due to car, car trouble? A motion is our second? Motion is second, on the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Carpenter.
Uh, thank you to everyone involved with the AmBucks Christmas Parade. We, uh, Sandra and I had an absolute wonderful time with the mascot riding on the new, uh, truck four. And, uh, Sandra and I wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, uh, Pine Tree has a couple of exciting things, but just real quickly, we've, uh, the interpretation, uh, speech and debate team have captured the overall sweepstakes awarded at the competition on the ninth. And the district break will be December the eighteenth through January first. Uh, district offices will reopen on January second, students will return on January third. And that's outstanding from our friends at Pine Tree. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Snoddy.
The City of Longview Partners in Prevention, Unity, and Diversity Committee announces Don Ashar and Eric Love as the twenty-twenty-four Unity Honors recipients at the twentieth annual Unity Honors luncheon. The luncheon will be held from eleven-thirty AM to one PM on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four at the Mod Cop Convention Center, One Hundred Grand Boulevard. Special recognition will be given to Longview Queens United and Ware East Texas Montessori Academy. The Unity Honors is a lifetime achievement award recognizing residents who have demonstrated leadership in promoting unity, mutual understanding, and social justice. I would also like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Newstead.
So this is from the, uh, AmBucks Downtown Christmas Parade. We had the honor of being part of the Parks and Recreation float, which was cleverly named View on Patrol. And, uh, the kids and I, we had a great time, and we also got to share with Councilwoman Gamba Gamba here. Now, she was in the hot air balloon with Sky, but, uh, we were on the water one with Zuma, and I have to say, Zuma was the more popular of the pop.
Trolls.
Completely subjective, all right. Um, also, it was kind of convenient on the presentation from Art's Longview and also kind of feeling from being downtown and being able to enjoy, uh, beauty of downtown. And so I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about some of the Art's Longview stuff. So, um, we heard earlier about the grants that we got, so, um, just, Art's Longview in its own has got over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, in grants for banners, the wrapped utility boxes, the street sign toppers, murals and sculptures. And this was, you know, it was recognized as a cultural district in twenty nineteen, they have done a phenomenal job. Also, the city's, uh, new Grant and Human Services Department was created in February of twenty-twenty-two, and the city has been awarded two point four million dollars in grants from their work on that. So, thanks to them, Laura and the team, for all that they're doing there to keep that. And then even Keep Longview Beautiful, uh, they had brought in more than five hundred thousand. So the city's doing a lot of work, uh, to get us access to these grants to help continue to beautify Longview. So we appreciate, appreciate that and enjoy it. And then, uh, the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center will host a movie night on the lawn on Wednesday, December twentieth. Krist Mutz on Kermit Street will tie into the center's holiday theme of The Nightmare Before Christmas with a showing of the movie after an annual open house. The event is hosted in partnership with Creature, Creature Comforts Pet Resort. The open house will begin at six PM with the movie starting at seven PM at the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. Vendors including Street Licious, Traveling Toms, and Sugar Rush will be at the event, and attendees are encouraged to bring blankets, chairs, and all family members, both two or four-legged. The event will also include a choir and live music to entertain during the open house. And y'all feel free to openly discuss or debate if The Nightmare Before Christmas is a Christmas movie or a Halloween movie.
Is that it?
That's all.
Okay. Ms. Gamba.
I'll make it quick. Good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to give a congratulations to Lorena Martinez. This weekend, uh, the Hispanic community had an event called Perlas and Tierras, where they nominated women who have left their domestic violence partnerships. Um, and so we'd like to commend those women for doing that, as well as, um, I won an award along with Judge Blaylock from our community. I'd also like to, you can go to the next one. Uh, give a, uh, thank you so much to the Salvation Army and Captain Tamara Robb and all the local Rotary Clubs for ringing the bell. Um, they'd like to remind you that this holiday season, if you could please give back to the Salvation Army, who takes care of the needs of so much in our community. Thank you to the library and all the various city, um, employees for all the multiple, uh, multitude of events that we've had during this holiday season. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Feliz Navidad, we really appreciate you. Uh, thank you to our fire department for inviting the council, um, over to your Christmas party. We really appreciate, uh, not only you inviting us, but everything that you do to keep our communities safe. Um, thank you to Mr. Joe Duncan and Felicia Ferguson for actually taking their time to create this beautiful float that we got to be on. Um, thank you so much, and I think that both Councilman Newstead and I were sack of potatoes compared to Paw Patrol. All I really heard was Paw Patrol from every child, so. Um, thank you to Ms. Erin Latham, uh, charge nurse at Pine Tree Lodge. I wanted to put this up here just to let everybody know what a simple act of kindness can do. She put this out on social media, and all the, um, older folks at Pine Tree Lodge got adopted. Not just that, but it started a spark of kindness and revolution in our city. And apparently, a lot of our citizens went to every single nursing home to make sure that people got adopted. So I just wanted to remind all of you what it's like to be kind during this season. And, uh, next week I'll be presenting Ms. Latham with a letter, just thanking her for her act of kindness. Congrats again, Chief Boone and Longview PD. I'm just taking this time to congratulate you and plug in that, uh, they are hiring, so please join the Longview Police Department. Thank you to Pine Tree for allowing me to judge your door decorating contest, and thank you for providing us with way too much sugar. We really appreciate it. Um, and volunteers are needed to wrap gifts for Stock the Sleigh, uh, twelve fourteen from nine to four, twelve fifteen from eight thirty to twelve, twelve sixteen. But as well as if you want to drop off any gifts or donations to the Women's Center, or if you are in a domestic partnership that is abusive, please reach out to the Women's Center, who can help point you in the right direction, or various other organizations in our community. Once again, Feliz Navidad, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Mr. Pearl.
Uh, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, uh, I think Michelle said about everything we had to say.
Mr. Mcfee.
Um, Christmas closings and New Year's closings sanitation. City office will be closed Monday, December twenty-fifth, Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, and Monday, January first and first in recognition of Christmas and New Year's holidays. Trash and recycling collection will shift one day each of those weeks. Also, Longview Transit will once again offer a safe ride home from eight PM to three AM on Sunday, December thirty-first. Uh, thank you to Scott and all that group for doing this, because that's a, a huge service to our community. So if you overindulge, know that there's someone there to take you home, please do not drive while you are unable to drive. Uh, management training graduation. Uh, graduation to the graduates of the city's first So You Want to Be a Manager training course. City Manager Roland Mcfee and Assistant City Manager Marion Hagan-Bueker developed this training course to provide equitable and accessible leadership training from experts currently employed by the city for employees looking to grow within the city. Uh, four of our participants were promoted during the course, and another three have been accepted to graduate programs. It was my privilege to speak with the precipice, precipice, participants this week as part of their graduation. Uh, those graduating were Luke Altman, Scott Bruner, Erin Clinton, Cody Corin, Steve Green, Ryan Howard, Stephen Hubbard, Byron, Brian McBride, Anthony Minyard, Carlos Rhimes, Randy Ross, Deidre Smith, Angela Walker, Kim Wallace. It was a really neat, uh, group. Uh, I'm glad to see us taking the initiative to help train individuals so that we can grow from within, because any organization that fails to grow with, from within, will fail to grow, period. So we need to do that and continue to do that on our own, and I thank you, Roland, for, um, initiating that program and continuing that good work. And on another note, I don't know if any of y'all have been to Carmella's Santa Land, but I'm just going to tell you. I want to give a special shout out to Carmella Davis and her husband, Mark Atkinson. Uh, this is an obvious labor of love. They do this from the goodness of their hearts. Um, this is a free local venue, has become a holiday tradition for so many people in Longview and all of East Texas. There are cars lined up for miles every night to come into this, um, light show, and they spend their time and their money in Longview, and they do this for free. Uh, they do accept donations, but it is an absolute free ride through that Santa Land. And, you know, if you go to the other venues in and across our community, this is as good, if not better, than any one of them. They charge as much as thirty dollars a vehicle to go through those venues. So what really struck me when I was there is I saw multiple vans from churches and nursing homes from all over. It wasn't just Longview, it was Tyler, Mount Enterprise, I saw them as far as Mount Pleasant. And I asked Mark, I said, wh- what is the deal? He goes, because it's free. They bring their people here and we love doing it. So, you know, shout out to them for doing something out of the goodness of their heart. But if you go and you can donate, please donate, help them out a little bit, because they, they're not asking for it, but it's available. So, uh, what a great thing for them to do and for a great thing to, it's kind of put Longview and East Texas on the map for this, these light shows, because people travel a long way to see these things. So thank you, Mark and Carmella, y'all are, um, true hearts within an angel, I tell you. So with that, I would like to wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, be safe. Uh, we look forward to seeing you again next year. Thank you for being here, and until then, God bless you all, we're adjourned.